Okay, several call.
Hi, Paul.
Everyone is here. Welcome. So first item is approve the August 16 meeting minutes. Can I apologize, I didn't realize the transcript was on here too.
Oh my gosh.
It's a very long turnout.
No, don't do that.
But it's good thing Bob's still planting trees.
Yeah, more trees. I found a couple typos. Mary, go ahead and tell me.
At Wayne Trim. Yeah, okay, that was in a couple of places. And in looking through the transcript, I couldn't find the motion to extend the meeting. The motion for adjournment is there, but it was really two separate motions at two separate times. And I've been through the transcript, looking at the time that it would have been pertinent. And I don't know if it's possible to, if we have to go back. But I think inserting that the time of the motion to extend the meeting.
Well, that's at eight, right?
No, it was before that.
It was when we were deciding that we weren't going to work on the master plan because everybody was exhausted doing the zoning.
And we need to get the reports.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you need to put the time on both of those?
Yeah.
All right, what do you get proposed to do? Like, how important is it to have that? To have the start and finish, right? Let me follow us.
I think we may have to go back to the recording.
I mean, are you sure that we did have a motion to extend though? We did.
We did, because we ended at like 8:08 or something.
Yeah.
Like how important it is to, for my time, I can do that. Like, are we illegal if we don't do that? Or is it just like a nice to have?
Go with your.
I know, right?
So do you remember if you made the motion?
He usually does, yes.
Probably did, right?
And he was in the extension and adjournment.
I put it in there that it was, wait, this is what I got. So this is what I put in here. It was Bob and Jane.
Right, to extend. But it didn't happen, it happened before we did the reports.
Yeah.
So just trying to identify timing. And I probably can.
But this doesn't have to be, like, so this whole section is extension and adjournment. So I don't think, I don't look at the meeting minutes from top to finish, because we kind of bounce around sometimes, right? But I agree, we need the time and then we can find it. But I wouldn't look at it so literally. Because sometimes we bounce around.
Will we also talk over each other?
Typically, it's just important to have that motion in there. You know, I think in the future, we'd like to see like what time that motion was made.
We have the motion to extend.
Yeah, and I think that if we just put it in chronological order, after the master plan and before reports, just motion to extend, put it right there, you don't need a time precisely. But just that we want to extend.
Can you show me where they're, where they're where you want it? I'll just pop it up right now. This is the case.
So before reports.
So that's like a whole new section?
Mm-hmm.
Just the motion to extend.
Is that like in the law?
It would be seven, then. It would be a new number seven. And then the number seven, the wrong number of seven, which is eight.
Sorry, it was at 1:55 in the meeting. It's, it is in the transcript.
Okay.
The motion to complete the agenda was by Jane.
So it'll be about 7:57, right?
Yeah, in my mind it was 8:00.
You can't understand what somebody's saying.
Yeah.
So if you're, if you're looking, so the way that the, just because I've used Otter a lot, the way that the transcripts work is if you're in the actual edible version, you can play it, what the transcript is at that moment. So if it is garbled or weird, you can edit it and you can be like, oh, they said such and such. It just didn't quite catch because the microphone or people talking at the same time. But it is there, I see it, Jane. At 1:55, it starts with.
But it doesn't say, it sort of doesn't even say, it doesn't say.
Yeah, it's, just because I'm used to reading it, it says, we've got more tech savvy. Okay, we're going to have the motion to complete our agenda by Jane. And so I, yeah, and then I'm not sure who seconded it because of.
I have written Bob and Jane.
Well, just Bob's motion, yeah.
Bob's motion and seconded it. That was just on my, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, everyone cool with that?
Yep.
And I think I've got the.
So if you want to take out A in your last section, you probably can do that.
I already did.
Motion to extend.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying, because it's a duplicate.
Yeah.
Okay, that looks good. Anything else?
I couldn't be anything else. Move to approve the minutes as amended.
Right, what time is that?
All right, hold on. Thank you. So approved.
Let me get back to.
Well, it would be approved as amended, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to write it here so you all can watch. Motion to approve as amended.
I can't see it.
It's not screen sharing.
You get to see.
All right. Let's move to prepare. New year.
This is, this is the presentation.
Okay. Okay. So moving on to additions or corrections to the agenda. In new business, we are going to add that we're going to have a preliminary plans review of 102 and 106 Mill Street. You should have the site plan and some notes in your information. And then we will discuss possible dates for combined meeting or council meeting.
What was the second thing?
We're going to discuss dates for a possible combined meeting.
Oh, that's already in there. I'm sorry, I thought that was a new year.
She was just out of curiosity to guess we were going to do.
You don't want to say yours?
Okay.
Good idea. Any correspondence?
Do we have anything? Okay. And moving on to public comment. Mary.
Hi.
Lisa, come in.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here. We are the residents of North Shore Drive. And we know the Seventh Street has been an ongoing thing for the last couple of years. I guess we are all looking for a definitive timeline on this. And when are things going to the village council, which is in a meeting in two weeks? And then we have the usual winter exodus, you know, from Northport to warmer climates. So I think, and there are several people that are on Zoom here along with Jane and Kim, who are with me tonight, my neighbors. And we know, you have done an incredible job. I would not want your job in a million years to combine what you're trying to do, all the comments, so that everyone is heard fairly evenly. And I think we're just looking for a definitive timeline. And my other concern is how this information, the rubrics, all your comments, are going to be distributed to the public. People who don't have computers. I mean, your website is not easy to find things on. And if it's put up on the website, how do you find it? And for people that, that need to know, we have to think of all those people in town that it's kind of gone on and on and on. And some people think it's all over. Oh, it's not. We're still here, you know, how many years later? So I guess we're looking for that. As I looked at the agenda tonight, if we could address those more specifically as to what's going on, because we're entering right back into the winter system again. And those of us on North Shore Drive are wondering, you know, what's going to happen? So those are my issues, and I would like some answers tonight.
Good question. I have the same question. And I'm wondering why we're still talking about it. So who wants to answer that?
No, this is not.
This is a public comment.
You get to do it later.
Okay, well, that's spoiler alert. I have the same question. Sorry.
Any other public comment? Anybody out on Zoom? Okay. And moving on to new business. So Lisa is here.
I'm the new business? Okay. Now, when I present, can there be back and forth between commentary and?
Yes.
Okay. And then I have a board that I could put up there. Would you like me to stand behind?
Yeah, I mean, I think Virginia's going to project it as well. So people on Zoom can hopefully see it better.
Okay.
It's probably, is it the same, Lisa, as what you handed out?
Yes.
Okay, so it might be on the screen too, so however you want to do it.
All right.
Okay, my name's Lisa Faragad. I'm head chef for Stony Point Studios, SPS, our protection since day. And I am representing the new buyers of 102 and 106 Mill Street. And that would be Ben and Don Clayton. And they can't be here tonight if they wanted to, but they're in Kansas and it's Don's birthday today. And Ben didn't, he should stay. So anyways, the purpose for coming here is sort of a preliminary. We want to share our vision and make sure we're heading in the right direction. Maybe clarify some things that are in the zoning ordinance that we're having a late shift.
If you could say what buildings they are for people if they don't know, that it's the Pennington Collection and Studio 106, just so people out there know what we're talking about.
Sure, okay. So the Pennington building is on the corner, across from Tom's. There's a carport open space right here, and then Village 106 is our studio. Off to the top right there. This image, I don't have big, but it's a little bit easier to see because it shows the, your plans of, you know, that's what we all have it. So, okay, so what we have here is in the Pennington building, it's retail space at a lower level, and then there's two apartments above it. The two apartments are rented by one owner, and it's the owner of the art studios. Sorry. Because I know one. Studio 106. And they're in this space. And then there's, in this building, there's Studio 106. This covered area is on the property of 106. And it's a carport that parks the owner, the, the renter of the two units up here that are not out of the property. But also, there's a space of, there's a rental space above it that's residential with a tenant, and then another one underneath it with a tenant. So right now, there's three renters in it, and then two retail spaces right there. So what we're struggling with right now is parking. And I know it's an ongoing issue for a lot of villages. And the nature of this town, you don't want to have your, your core commercial district with all these wide open spaces of parking all around it, because it takes away the fuel and everything. And so we would like to fill this in and put retail space in the carport area, which takes away the two spaces that are not for this building, but they're actually being used by one tenant in each one. So that's one of the things that we want to do. So in taking away the parking, our vision, I mean, we're wondering if this is even something that you would entertain in the village is provide some spaces right here. There is, it's fairly deep on Second Street right here. We have the creek running through right here, which blocks the property and from entering it and providing parking in it. From their property corner out to the pavement, it's 28 feet deep. And it's almost 32 across here. So there's room for three spaces along the property line right here, with some room to spare if we follow the zoning ordinance of 10 feet by 20 feet. Yeah, 28 feet right here. And then I measured along the edge of the road right here, across here, and there's actually room for six or seven spaces parking, basing and along that line right there. So that's one thing we would wonder if that could be something you could discuss and maybe talk about later on. And then if that's not allowed, what are our options? If we get rid of the two parking here, what, how many spaces are required? And we could work with Eagle to cross this right here. What we're thinking is if they park here, we would work with Eagle to get a footpath and a footbridge over the creek in order to get to the backside of this property. Only there, so. I did make some little visuals. So you can kind of see. Right, so these are the three car spaces. And this is a backup space required for backing up the meeting on the spot. So it wouldn't be necessary right here, but they would fit like right there. But if you do have to cross over and say it needs six, well, we have a six right here if you can see it. But you can see how much space it takes up of that green space behind there. And it's a, it's a nice space. You have the creek running through there and all this green space right here that we hate to turn into a big parking lot with another culvert over the creek right here versus a nice footbridge for the public to cross over and be able to use some of the space right here that's used for commercial use.
And you keep it for that part. I think that's the gist of it all.
So there's two slots, there's two slots from where the covered area.
Yeah, right here, right here, there's two.
Does he have any interest in the village's company for sale?
He does not. I, he, he's, he wants to use this as his investment. He doesn't want his parking lot to cross the, this house is right here. And he's not ready to invest that much just to get parking back here.
What's the, what's, what property does, goes with that?
With, with this, with this right here?
Whose is that?
That goes, okay, it's, this is the prop line. And then it jogs right here. And this is, it's an odd thing too.
He owns that green space.
Yes. And one thing that Gosling's do back there, the civil engineers that generated the site plan and put the space in for him. If you go on Second Street, you'll see the two stakes by the telephone poles right there. But you'll notice that Arbs Bakery is like standing in the property line right there. And there's all this green space to the road. And so they're working out like how did, what happened right here? And like what type of easement? Who does this belong to? Is this village property? Is it part of this extension, the right of way?
It's over right there.
So they're, Gosling's looking into that, and they're not clear yet either. I don't know if that is.
Well, they think we are. That is the road right of way, correct?
Yeah.
Is it? Okay. It's 28 feet from the edge of the road to his property line. Okay. Yeah, so.
66 feet is the typical road right of way. Right, but they all differ, so we can confirm with our street.
It's like there's more space. I didn't.
Well, the state goes 201, it'd be 66.
Yeah. And then the, the Northport Creek, it's owned by this parcel. And then it crosses over and we get right here, and there's this jog right in there that it says exception, we're not sure what, where it is right there. Why it says that.
Could you clarify? I, I followed where you said there were three spots potentially on the other side of the creek. But then you said six more next to it?
Yeah, this goes beyond, his property ends right here. But beyond here, there's green space all the way down. It does narrow a little bit because of the creek getting closer and closer to the road. But I measured it so that you could probably get six.
Who owns the green, the additional green space?
It's a right of way. I think it's.
So it's village property, okay.
It sounds like Gosling's do back's going to confirm that.
They're talking with Onan about like how he, his stakes came to be. And if they were saying that over the years, when the plant maps were on paper, their point of beginning was always shifting. And that could have caused maybe some of this overlap right in here. And he's going to give as much information as he can find on that. And Clayton's the owner. They were hoping to get the three spaces for the rental spaces on this part, but then have the rest, he's willing to pay and develop it if, if the village approves it, to get three, six, seven possible parking spaces. But allowing the three that are allowed to sign to be part of his, for his tenants to cross over the creek and, and their properties that way.
So my understanding of our zoning, for sure, is that during site plan review, we do have discretion to waive or adjust the parking requirements if it's fitting to the situation. And being in the core district, that's something that we have talked extensively about. I think the issue for you guys is that some of your space is residential. And so how do we approach that if we're waiving parking or changing parking? Because residential parking is a little bit different of a need than just commercial parking, which I personally am fine with none being there for that. But, but that's me. But that being said, I think, to me, as I'm chair of infrastructure, and I feel like this is definitely like the use of right of way or public space is definitely a DPW question and like a bigger than the planning commission question, for sure. We have infrastructure on Friday, coincidentally. So I could definitely, at 1 o'clock. So I could add it to our agenda for infrastructure, for sure, in terms of that question. As far as, like, from my perspective, I know that we do have the ability to waive or change parking requirements. And I think, for the most part, there's, you know, consensus among the planning commission that we want to try and eliminate parking lots from the core district as much as possible. And so in that respect, from my perspective, we're kind of on the same page as you. We're willing to work and figure out what can happen. And I'm just not sure if using the right of way is going to be the way that we can achieve that. I don't know what other options you have. I'm just saying that I'm not sure that that's something that DPW is going to be comfortable with. And then I also think, even if we said, okay, so this is just hypothetical, completely hypothetical. But if we were like, no parking at all, you don't need any parking spots, what do we do with those residential spaces in the winter when it needs plowed? And the only place that can be is the road? That's not a good situation either for DPW. And for not just our DPW, but Road Commission, because they do, you know, the main drag. So to me, that's the bigger issue, and I'm not sure that we can answer it for you, per se. But.
I would rather you, before we answer that for, for you, run it by infrastructure, because.
It changes a lot. It's like, well, and, and not just infrastructure, but definitely Chris Holton, our DPW superintendent, to see, and, and my gut is that he's not going to like it. I don't know if you've talked to him at all.
No.
But I just, knowing how difficult it is to maintain the streets and the snow and all of these things, I'm not sure he'll be thrilled with that idea. But maybe I'm wrong.
We couldn't even answer it tonight, anyway. This isn't a sound.
Right, correct, yes, yeah.
Just preliminary.
Yeah.
I would agree, we do have some other situations, scenarios where parking has to be, you know, residential spaces have to be moved to our marina, moving around. And it does make it hard for those residents in the wintertime in the space, so.
Yeah, and you're not the first person to notice that Arbs is over the line or things like that. And it's been discussed in infrastructure many times. It's definitely a non-conforming structure that has been there and the lines of whatever.
Quite a moment.
Yes, yes. So.
I think the covered parking, I wouldn't be uncomfortable seeing that go away because I really am not comfortable with seeing gasoline and cars right immediately adjacent, hemmed into wood buildings that are of century quality. And I am, I am surprised that Q Cook has even allowed, you know, any parking or anything to go on in there. Also with the new zoning we're looking at, what was the, what did they call that? The?
Form based, yeah.
This adding some more space, retail space in there. I think that goes along with the form base. I mean, it's very nice.
And keeping the street wall.
Yeah, there's a sustained street wall there, so that is a positive.
Yeah.
I think the, of the options you laid out, the least appealing to me would be to have to put a culvert over the creek and take up the green space.
I don't think, yeah, like, I would be surprised if people like really want you to do that. And I think it would be challenging with the state and all of the issues with the creek right now, as it is. I, I think, like, when I hear you say the walking bridge, even that, I'm like, that could be a lot harder than you are aware. But maybe, you know, but I think that that would be great. I just, yeah, I also think doing the six spaces is probably even less ideal than the three, just because then you're bridging over into other property that has been committing it to parking for who knows, you know, how would we undo that? I just think that would probably be a challenge that people may not want to tackle.
Okay, and any other questions or comments or? Lisa, are you available on Friday? Or should, I mean, Laura obviously.
Yeah, we can definitely talk further. And if you can't be there, or you can Zoom, or, you know, I can get the same stuff and be sure we have it for the meeting. But yeah, I'm sure, obviously, it would be beneficial if you were there, though. Just because they.
Is it in the evening on Friday?
It's at 1 o'clock.
Oh, okay.
On Friday at 1, yeah, Friday at 1.
If you need to be there, I'm available.
Okay, perfect. Well, I'll be sure to get you a meeting and stuff too, so.
Is Indiana going to be there?
Oh, yeah, Chris is always there. And then I'm hoping the water operator, but that won't pertain.
But we don't need a motion or anything to refer this to infrastructure.
No, because this is just.
It'll go on, yeah.
I really appreciate, I'm excited that you're listening to this, and I appreciate that. And one of my other questions is because we have one, two, three, four units to run for, does that mean that four spaces are required? Do we need to reduce it down to three spaces in our three rentals? In order to have three or willing to maybe just set it up or according to waiving what it says in the zoning ordinance? Okay.
That's a variance issue.
Well, it's really not. We, we have the discretion to waive or change or adjust the parking, given the circumstances that the situation gives us. I think, to me, being in the core district and all of the things that we've just explained mean that we are very, like, willing to work with you and see what we can do. It's just a matter of coming up with what solution works. Because I think that it is really challenging to have a rental that doesn't have a parking spot. So I think we probably are going to want to come up with something. And I know John's definitely going to want to. But, but I think that just figuring out how do we do that? Because there are public parking lots, there are other options potentially that we address in the winter. Yeah, there's street parking. It's just figuring out what do we do? I, I think. I, I think though that everybody is probably very willing to work with you and to, to figure out, because we want housing. I mean, we don't wanna, we wanna stop you from having more.
We don't want residential to go away.
Yeah, we, we wanna have as much of that available as possible.
But this doesn't add housing.
There's not, there's not.
There's not any more there, yeah.
Oh, huh, are they?
Well, they're not, they're not, they're, 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 they're not adding, they're not adding retail.
They just, they, she hasn't.
So nothing's being added.
What's, um, the plan for the commercial building? Like what are they, um, gonna put in there?
The infill or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, okay, that's approximately, if, if they fill it into here, it's a little bit further than that one goes. That's one thousand sixty square feet approximately and they would just like to, um, maybe, like you said, you know, the street front, on a straight line and we'd like to have it be real traditional or character and that kind of fits like what was here a hundred years ago. Maybe look at some of the historic buildings that were here in the past that aren't here anymore, maybe pull some elements off that. Have like a lot of glass, nice tins of stuff along the storefront, maybe recess the door like they are in the other two buildings that kind of tie that together and do something, some mosaic on the floor or something. We, we have ideas, but we really want the characters to be old, nothing modern, which I like the modern places in the villages, I think it's fun to have them there. But right here, that was our.
At least it has our architectural design standards.
I also think it might do, if you look at, yeah, if you look at our, the new zoning that we're looking at adopting, not that we have yet, but we're on the precipice of that, I think, I hope. Um, finally, and so if you look at that too, the core district, there's a lot of information in there and, you know, glass and things like that are definitely outlined and I think that could help you too.
Okay.
And that is on our website.
Okay, I'm sure Joni could get it.
That'd be nice, thank you. Right, and then another question that I have is the conforming, non-conforming. Um, but I read through the zoning ordinance and to me, these properties seem like they are conforming for the lot or the structure and, and the use. And I just wanna make sure that there's nothing we need to do there to get it from class A to class B or anything like that and, okay.
Not, not unless you're changing the use of something that I'm not aware of.
Same, the residential be residential, the commercial be commercial, apart from this right here infill being a commercial space, retail, but um, as far as a tenant or renter for the space, we don't have yet, but it would probably be something that, uh, what do they write to do a fit out of the interior of it, but we will have the facade all designed for it and, and infrastructure and that.
As long as it's used by right, which it's retail it is, so, yeah.
Okay. And then to move forward on this part, we need to, like, iron out some of the parking things first and then from there, once we have some direction on that, get a site plan ready and then present a site plan to the board for approval.
Yep.
Good.
Yeah.
Is there anything I'm missing?
I missed all your last thing.
F E R I N G A.
If the Eagle does not approve a footbridge across the creek, would that change your position on the, how useful those parking spots are?
It depends on the answer to whether they're required or not, because if we eliminate the parking, then our site plan doesn't get approved, then there's no direction to go in from here besides renovating was already there.
You're only talking about people walking around, if, if there was no footbridge, you could come onto the sidewalk and it's a block.
Yeah, and there's, I think, there's other options to this floor, but it, it's totally dependent on neighborhood, neighboring properties and if they would allow easements and shared access to the drive.
And the later you get.
They're not obligated to do that either. But apartments up here, you can't even get to them from back there.
No, so they wouldn't be using a footbridge?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I mean, everyone would come flock around the park anyways.
You can't get it, you have to get onto the street to get into the apartment.
Unless they have a ladder, but, you know, stairs in the back or something. But you're right, they're, they're actually.
There are, it's right there. We do have an application started with Eagle right now to see how much they would allow right there and, you know, if it's an okay option.
When you're in the summer, when we've got a lot of tourists and visitors here, uh, those three spaces are gonna probably be taken by everybody but.
I know, it's like.
Who they were intended for.
They need to have them parked.
It's society.
And even then.
I wonder if it would make sense for us to, as a group, to go over and just observe the site a little bit. I think then we're able to speak more intelligently about it if we viewed the, the space on the other side of the creek and could understand what the implications might be.
As a group. Yeah, I was out there the other day and all of a sudden there was a guy taking pictures and like, hey, and it's like, it was the owner and like, and we started talking, we're like, wait, I really, if you're gonna do a site plan review, I probably shouldn't really be standing there.
I need to walk away now.
Yes, like, I don't know.
It was out, when I went out there too, I actually parked in the spot right here and measured it. There was, there was plenty of room right here and there's a lot of string from the, you know, there's a lot of foliage and stuff through here that screws wherever could be right here, but it is a nice place, but I think it's an excellent option and I think that it could be a lot of one to have the path coming down through here so that people, if this does get, you know, lower, if it does ever get used for commercial reasons, you can vary your free access, you know, please help us ramp up again on that site too, just I'm hoping. The Eagle will be open soon.
That's.
Something our C and I wrote.
I know we have, um, we have, I believe we have an ordinance that prohibits, uh, bridges across the creek. That's what I was thinking too, I just couldn't think of a plan. Yeah, I have to look at, however, the village is involved somehow, one way or another, so.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Yeah, anything else?
No, we hope you can make it to infrastructure on Friday. That would be helpful.
Yeah, I'll give it to Joni, perfect, and then.
Awesome.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our next item in the business, um, Gina from Illinois Township and Commission contacted Jane and myself to see if we'd like to do another combined meeting with them and gave us a couple of dates. So I just wanted to throw those out there, see if they will work for anybody, so we can get back to her.
The, um, the more seasoned, uh, planning commissioners may remember that at our last joint meeting, we had scheduled a September thirteenth joint meeting, but they have changed their meeting dates. And so that is no longer an option since it was last.
Yes, I wasn't even aware of that, so, before my time, um.
So this is something that the, uh, previous iteration of the planning committee was in favor of doing.
So the dates they've thrown out there are October twenty-fifth, November eighth, and November twenty-second. Does anybody have a date that they?
I definitely cannot deviate.
Okay.
And what, twenty, what's twenty-second?
November twenty-seventh. Which I feel like it's for Thanksgiving.
It's the day for Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
October twenty-fifth, is it? Is October twenty-fifth work or do we wanna throw some dates back at that maybe?
I think they're picking, those are all dates of their meeting, so they were planning for it to just be one of their regular ones, yeah.
I'm sorry, what, is that a Wednesday or?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
They, they moved their meetings on to Wednesday.
Okay.
Seven PM.
Seven.
So, um, October twenty-fifth works for me.
That work for everyone else?
Works for me.
I have a lion, a lion's club that night, but we can see that.
Oh, that's right.
But we can.
I mean, I'm speaking for myself. I'm not boiling. I don't have to bring a dish to pass this.
Okay, so October twenty-fifth it is.
And I'm sorry, where, the location will be at the.
Okay. So, moving on to zoning. We do not have an, uh, update from Arthur. I did include the Suttons Bay user guide because I know we had spoke about that before, if we wanted to include something like this in our new zoning. So I don't know if any of you have had a chance to look at it, if there's any, if we wanna discuss this tonight or if we wanna wait until we get everything back from Arthur.
Have we had something?
We have none. Joni has sent some reminders again. Yeah, I, there was an amendment to the contract originally this spring that, um, for, uh, as some of you may recall, that our contract with Waitrim was an kind of a task, um, and fee associated with that task. And we've gone over in some areas, but haven't completed in other areas. And so my understanding is, um, that they're gonna be looking for approval of that, the amendments to the task. Um, and we did have a conversation about that, it was, one was in our form base code and the other was just in our zoning amendments, the extra work that has been done in ours. Um, and so, um, I did speak with, uh, Jane Gale, our finance chair about, and, and it's on the agenda for the October meeting, which is October fifth, um, and so it needs to be drawn for the, for the council, yeah.
So we'll do anything until, I mean, okay, that has to be approved then.
So he's. Then they didn't work on the other tasks.
Okay. So it, does it mean he hasn't worked on the other tasks?
No. He's been, he has been logging some hours, but he didn't feel comfortable because he can't bill to the other ones. There was, there was some confusion there because it's forty-three hundred dollars is the additional, um, amendment to our contract with them. And, uh, the way I understood his, um, billing is that, you know, they need to get caught up on these items and then they move on to the others. But he has been, he, I have sent all the information to him, Virginia has done a wonderful job and, and Gretchen going through and, and completing that, I mean, I think we're just so close. So close. And so, I mean, even if that approval is October fifth, it, it should, he has the document and so, um, I'm.
Should have one quickly.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're ready to go, I think.
I think this is a great idea, but I think we probably, my thoughts are we wait until we have.
Until I can finish.
Yeah.
At this point.
So, so I think that we almost have to see the completed new zoning ordinance that's going to have hyperlinks and stuff and we may not need as extensive, like user guide.
This is very extensive, I feel like. Okay, great, then we'll just wait until we hear back from Arthur and go from there. So Seventh Street, where are we in on Seventh Street?
Still me needing to finish this up. Yeah, so getting it typed up and finished, I mean, I just have not been able to finish. So, um, because of so many other commitments that I have, as well as a lot of personal things that have happened, um, which I know isn't ideal for anybody, I understand completely that people want us to move forward and I want to move forward too. I, you know, if I could have someone else do it, I would, I just don't know how someone else can do it without it taking more time, which is what happened with the zoning. Um, I am extremely hopeful that I'll be able to make progress because school is back in and so my kids are all in school and all of these things are allowing me to have some time to work. Um, but it also has been really challenging, which I know again doesn't help anyone, but because of infrastructure and me being chair of that, there's a lot of really important things happening there that take an enormous amount of my time as well. And so it's just been really difficult to fit it in.
Okay.
So that's the best.
So hopefully timeline, maybe we'll see somebody next month?
Yeah, so, yeah, I won't be able to have it before Friday, because I have infrastructure and there's a bunch that I still have to finish to get ready for that, but I am hopeful that I will be able to get it, I, I was able to get more done on it, it's not completely there. Um, and that's because, as Virginia knows, like, when you're working on it, if you get interrupted and all these other things, it makes it so that then getting back into it is challenging, so. I am hopeful and I will do my very best to have it so that we can have it ready for next meeting, if not before then, to look at. I mean, obviously, we'll have it ready ahead of time so that people can look, because it doesn't do us any good to have it just at the meeting, so.
I'm not sure what has to still be done.
I have to finish putting together all of the public comments into the addendum and then making sure that the second one doesn't have any mistakes in it. The second one.
Could we do it without the public comments?
I guess if we want to, but we had decided that those needed to be all compiled.
Can the information be, without the public comments, can all the other summary information in number two, then we can address later?
We could do that, but then it's not ready to turn over. I mean, I'm happy to turn those, I mean, if people want to look at those, but when, we had talked about it before, people want it all together.
I think that before we take it to the council, everything needs to be complete, but, um, I think it might be helpful to, for us to refresh our memories in looking at the three options.
I can send them to Gretchen and she can just email them or put them in a Dropbox.
Yeah.
Yep, so thanks.
That's fine.
And then as your team allows.
Yep.
Continue to populate the comments.
The addendum, yeah, yep, that's fine, I can do that.
That would be great.
Yep.
Didn't, didn't we also, um, agree at one point that we have to have a, a meeting with the public?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think we're gonna try.
That's another thing, so.
And it was my understanding, we're gonna try to do that with the village council though, correct? Like a joint meeting?
Have a public hearing and have, um, allow the trustees to be there to hear the public comment and questions.
That has to be scheduled and take place. Yeah, it's an, it's an important thing to do, but I'm saying to answer your question, there's a few steps that still need to take place.
And we, a public hearing requires notice of how many days?
At least fifteen, yeah.
But it has to be published for fifteen days, so that's part of the crux, because it's the only once weekly enterprise publishing.
Can take up to, yeah, at least three weeks.
How much time do you think it'll take you once you get like in the zone, if you get an interrupted time?
I would suspect several hours, just because it, I mean, there's just a lot to pull through still, um, because there's two years of public comments. I have, I mean, I have from when we met in.
May.
May, I had the public comment from like her, you know, the beginning of the year to there already, but it's the ones before that and then the ones since then.
Okay. Well, at least we have an update. Oh, um, master plan.
So I, I think with master plan, you provided us with.
I've got a lot, you've got a lot.
Where do you want?
Where do I go first? So, um, Laura and Kathy were kind enough to send me some information and then Jane sent out some information as well today. So we have some options as far as survey questions that I know we discussed, um, last month. Uh, Laura had also provided this North Port master plan process draft and that was based on Canton. And were you thinking that this should go out, the survey question, so we know what the, that the public?
I think, for me, the main thing was just being sure that the public was aware of like what the process is and what's happening, instead of just getting a survey and not really knowing what it is. And we don't have to use this, but I also thought it was helpful for myself to even know what typically other people do as the process. This was from MML, um, and I just think a lot of people don't even know necessarily what the master plan is. And so I just feel like having some additional information to go along with it is probably beneficial.
No, I agree, and this is definitely compact, um.
And just so people know, I did not spend time recently working on this instead of Seventh Street, okay? This I did in like January, February, when we originally had, I just want people to know that I have not had this for a second. I just want people to know that I have not had this for a second, okay? I did not go, man, I'm really gonna do a draft here. This is from like January and it's just until now that we haven't gotten to this part, so anyway.
I think we probably, at least we need to be aware that our master plan needs to go to the Lewinaw County Planning Commission. And it, it's not written in here, but that's another one I need to add.
Well, and so, we have to notify, I mean, what I read, you have to notify township, so.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Well, and my understanding too is we have to have like a 63-day period for public comments to come in, is that, that's correct?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we want to be sure that, and that's part of why I think we want to have something that kind of outlines it for people, it makes it a little easier, I think, for ourselves, the council and the public.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we put something like this on top of the survey or like the first page of the survey or half of it.
Yeah.
Then it, people understand what they're getting when they get that information.
Yeah. And understanding where we are in that process, which may not be accurate. Yeah, I mean, if we're going to send out, you know, a survey or whatever, we'll want to check off some of these ones that we've gone through, but, yeah.
Okay.
That was my thought.
Great. So, survey questions, we've got four options. I personally thought Clausen's was messy. So, I don't know how everybody else feels about it. I really like this version of Columbia Township that Jane provided this afternoon. I feel like it's a very easy read, very, it's not too frank thing. Yeah, where, because I thought Pelkaska had some really good questions that they proposed, but I didn't like the format of it. So, I don't know how everybody else feels if we want to discuss that and kind of think, much of them that we think would be applicable to our situation here or how you guys would like to go with that.
I'd like to just rule out the Clausen and Bel Air because they're really more village government oriented as opposed to planning commission. And it would be just a ton of work to try to narrow down what's pertinent to the planning, master planning process.
Anybody have anything in Clausen or Village of Bel Air they think that we should keep or that would be helpful? I'm gonna use. Thank you for the funding.
I have the funding I want to ask.
Okay, so nothing in Village of Bel Air, Clausen, that we liked or?
I don't think there was anything in there that isn't.
So, isn't in the question?
Yeah, I think that they, yeah, I think there were similar questions, but they weren't necessary. And I agree, the format, I don't know, it's not easy. It's, yeah, it makes it harder to, to answer.
Yeah.
One thing that I picked up was that, you know, in so many surveys, they're asking how satisfied are you with this and that? But it seems to me the next question after that should be, what changes or improvements would make you increase your satisfaction?
Happy area situation, yes.
Finding out if they're happy or not is helpful, but tell us what you think we should do to get the scores up.
I agree.
And maybe every question we have that's along those lines should, the immediate question underneath is, tell us what you would, we should do to make the rate higher in the future.
Okay.
I've done a lot of surveys for my work and so just one word of caution is the more open text fields you have, the harder it is to get a data set, right? So, but it's good, we want to have, so maybe just not for each question. I would caution us from doing that because then it's going to be a million different answers and we're just going to be churning over it for months, I can just visualize that. But, you know, having the, the scale of questions, you know, one to five, and then a few opportunities for open texts, I think, would be really smart because then we can, you know.
If it's too long or too laborious, people won't feel it well.
They do it, right.
You have to find your balance.
That's another thing too. And just in sort of, in terms of data collection, it's really good to get like actual numbers, you know, like 75% of people said four out of five prefer this, right? Is a lot better than like 75 different unique answers. Because what do you do with that?
And some of it might be being, how you, how you approach writing a question.
How you write the questions.
So that you're getting feedback that is, will help you to improve the scores or whatever. I mean, just saying, I hate it or it's a three, but why, why did you rate it a three? If you don't find out why they rated it a three or a two or one, then it doesn't help that much.
Yeah, we can also steer things too with like multiple choice.
Okay.
You know, if, if this is your, you can build it with logic, right? So, it's like if, if they say this, then you go to this question and, and tell me why, you know? And then even the tell me why, it might not be an open text box, it could be, would you prefer one, two, three, four, five, or six other? You know, so then maybe we'll get like five like concrete things that people will respond to. It's hard to talk about in the abstract, but, but you're right on. Like the better, the more work we put into the survey, the better results we'll get out of it. Looking at these examples.
Yeah, I, I didn't make copies for everyone, but I brought three copies of the Lewinaw Township master plan survey that had 505 responses and many of them came from village residents. And I think that we can integrate their findings into ours and maybe see if there are some. There's a copy of the survey form attached to the report. And. So, we already have captured some data. And I'm not sure the best way to integrate if we just consider doing our survey completely separately or if we can cross-reference the final version of the survey we want to do.
With the township survey?
That was my question, maybe it's stating the obvious, but like wouldn't we piggyback on the township survey? I mean, I filled it out.
I did too.
I thought it was useful. But maybe we can build off that and make it even more specific to the village.
Yeah, I was looking, they do have an opportunity for adding free text about every.
Every couple of questions.
Third or. And then there were.
I think that your idea though of doing multiple choice is really valuable instead of so many open fields, just because we kind of know what some of them are going to be. And you could always do, you know, option E is other. And so, they could still give people a field, but like by giving them some of those choices, you're narrowing and helping them to identify what they're really trying to say. Because like, for example, with Seventh Street, one of the things that, you know, we've looked at is other things that people have suggested we could use the property for. And that has varied so widely, but then when you give people specific choices, they can respond to just those and not be like, well, wait a minute.
I wanted to be a circus.
Yes. But I just think that like, some of it is like, because they have the open field, then you're like really going off on tangents. Whereas if they see the multiple choice, that helps people narrow to like, oh, that does make the most sense. Like, I, I pick this when I'm really thinking about it with choices in front of me.
Well, because I think if they're well-thought-out choices, then we're going to get more concrete data than we would if we leave something open.
And. Well, the, I like the idea of the open questions, just having, because we're so small, having seen the results of the short-term rental survey, which we got back 130 some.
I filled it out.
And I thought the actual written answers were really helpful. Because just like John said, if somebody ranks something or, I don't know what their three means or something like that, but they, they could, and they're, it's not that hard to read all of them. I mean, how many will we?
Well, and I think, I don't think we're ruling out open text altogether, I just don't think we want it after every question.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I make sure, I totally agree. Yeah, like this, this has some open text in key places.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at the one on the township.
The township.
I don't think we have a.
I don't think, no, not everyone has it.
But. Yeah, I mean, I can help with that too, like in cities.
How many, how many of these would go out? How, what, what's the number?
Okay, I feel like.
Four hundred homes in the.
170.
We took into every property owner, so there's more parcels. I know that, you know, Cindy, her treasurer, sends out over 500, it's closer to 600 tax bills.
Okay.
Yeah.
We tended to that list, right?
Well, you, you'd be sending multiple to one.
Oh, okay. So, we have some difficulties.
Well, what's our return rate on most surveys? That's 25%?
Short-term rental.
That was 137. And I was thinking that we sent out.
Yeah, and that's what the township had.
That we sent out fewer than 400 and got 137 back. It seems to me it was around 360, 380, something like that. And 137, that's not a bad return.
No, it's really not.
And the township getting 505 when we have a population of around 2,200 is not bad either.
One of the things, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, one of the things too is that I, I do want to be sure that we have some stuff in there about Mill Pond. But I also want to be sure that that's not the only thing that's in there like that. Like, I think that we could ask questions about Marina or Hazrat or like be sure. I just, I want to get data about people's feelings on Mill Pond as chair of infrastructure. That is extremely valuable information to me, to be sure we're following what the majority of our citizens think and not just the people who are in our ears. But I also think that if it's the only thing that we ask about specific to properties in Northport, that that then kind of biases it a little bit. And so, I just want to be sure that when we're trying to figure out how to include that, that we be sure some of our other public spaces are. I don't even know what, how we want to do that. I'm just saying, I don't want it to be the only thing because I think that then that makes it weird and stand out, so.
Well, that was gonna be my next question, is if we wanted to try to come up with some questions from what we've got in front of us tonight, or if we want to kind of think on this and come back to it next month?
You know, I wonder if we could have a team of two people so it wouldn't have to be a public meeting.
Oh, sure.
Sit down and try to come up with a draft.
That's what I was gonna say too. I feel like if somebody could take the township one and make a draft and just throw in some of the things that we know we want to try to do and then we could all review that one and go from there. I think that'd be a lot faster than sitting and trying to all together.
I'll do that, no problem.
Okay.
If you look at the Columbia Township one, their opening questions pretty much cover the gamut of what would be, what we are putting in the master plan. And I kind of like the simplicity of just filling in a bubble and would kind of like to. With some, you know, modification maybe, but.
Okay.
But then again, going back, unless you understand why they're reading things the way they're reading them, you're not, you're missing an opportunity.
Right.
So, I mean, these are just how important is it to you? So, you're able to quantify public sentiment. But then on the more specific questions, I, I wouldn't see us using the questions Columbia Township used about.
Industrial.
And consumption of farmland.
Yeah.
But I like kind of that first taking the temperature.
Okay. I will work on it and get you an example for next month.
How long do we think is, I mean, how many questions, do we want to think about how many questions for targeting?
I would.
How many pages of, you know, the more we, I mean.
I think the longer the less response we're going to get.
Yeah.
So, I would like it to be front and back and maybe go into a page and a half, but.
A lot of people tend to forget there's a back page, don't they?
That's true. So.
I don't think we can fit it on one page.
No, it's not one page.
No, I think that's gonna be over.
I think it's gonna be, it's a couple of times.
Was five, eight.
Yeah.
And would we be doing an online version too? I think we should.
I think it would be great if we could, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that would be really helpful.
I mean, we've nailed them out, right? We have to mail them, but you can put a link to it, where you can do it online if you're ready, yeah.
What does a mailing cost us?
Quite a bit.
Well, a permit is 55 cents, but that's for a postcard.
So, this is not cheap.
No, but it's important, it's part of the process that we do, but yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think we talked about this, that we, we don't have everyone's emails, so it goes to the.
And then everybody has a computer.
Yeah, that's not true.
There are so people I know that do not, yes.
That's what Mary was just saying.
I know, I didn't want to question.
I know, five will.
You're like, I don't know who she's talking about though.
Yeah.
We're not gonna call anyone else.
The library will help people complete an online if they don't have a computer.
And I think we need to nail it, but I think it would be great to do an online one.
Just have an online action.
And we'll have a, I think, a way higher response if you have it.
Yeah, and it'll be easier to collate the data.
Oh, yeah.
Not just download it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I think that, and this is something that we're gonna discuss in the planning commission meeting with the township, it sounds like. But I think that that's why the Lewinaw Township Community Foundation had such a great response this spring is because they could do an online action, so.
That's probably.
Right.
Did the township also have like an in-person day in time that you could go and do it? I'm pretty sure they did and we could consider that too.
Oh, that's a great idea, yeah, they do.
Yeah, that's what I thought, they didn't have a lot of notice for it, is my recollection, but, but they did it that, but they did that too. And that could always be a consideration, maybe.
Yeah, the more accessible we make it, the more inclusive.
Well, and if you can, yeah, we could do all lanes at the same time so that we get as many responses as possible.
I think having hard copy available at the library too. For people who aren't property owners, but they're residents and owners, yeah. And, I mean, I can't speak for the staff, but they might be willing to help people with an online option who don't have computers to, you know, get logged in and.
Well, and just like the meeting postings, we could probably make a flyer that has a QR code or something that takes you right to it that we put at the bank and the post office and at the door and stuff like that too.
That's a great idea. And online, we can tell people about it. That's how I found out about the township one.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Does it, does it make sense to ask people to identify themselves? In case you want to follow up with them and.
On the S T R's, we gave them the option. If you wanted to, there was a spot, if you want, yeah.
I would just, if we required it, I would be afraid it would limit their answers.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea. And people did, there were people who did identify that and then some that didn't.
Do you know what the percentage was?
More didn't identify themselves than did.
That sounds right. You're gonna get more truthful responses if people feel like they can do it.
Yeah.
Without, you know, sort of retaliation.
Yeah. I put my, I put John Hoover on mine.
He's getting all the calls. Okay, so. Okay, so I'm gonna work on it, mock up and I'll bring that for next month. I know last month I had given you all a whole lot of paper, thank goodness for a five minutes trades, on the population data and for the master plan that we had already discussed. And I didn't know if we want to go backwards right now or if we want to keep moving through pages. know if we want to go backwards right now, or if we want to keep moving through page or page and then come back to it. I'm just gonna do it.
I, I have them here for one couple of months. This is the housing data, right?
Well, yeah, there was some demographic data, there was housing data.
Oh, my gosh.
Um. And I didn't know how, you know, comprehensive we wanted to be with what's there. I was trying to to pull from the two surveys that I, or the two packets that I had provided last month on, you know, demographics that we have. Page two of uh, LTCF Impact Committee from April twenty four, twenty twenty three. Virginia, I don't know if you have that or you can.
I'm looking at like eight, is the turf right there?
The turf right there.
I'm gonna pump up the memories for housing now, so.
Yeah, housing now is a huge one, so.
Yeah, I brought it, I think I brought it.
Well, pretty much every.
Not everything.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
My housing life, I'm probably like shut down your computer as well, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's not like that.
Although there's a color.
Yeah, that's because we messed up a little bit.
It's a hard thing.
It was, is, you have to read that one?
Yeah.
I was, I was scared. So worried about getting the print copy.
Yeah, that's okay, that's why I wrote this. I told Virginia, I want to talk about this if we have time, so have it ready to pull up. Everybody can look at it. So page two. The Lulunon Township demographic. I thought this might be something that would be nice to incorporate into, and I guess these don't have page numbers, so the population trends and seasonal population. Section. And the demographic se- section. Oh, they are here, sorry. And I'm like getting old, so I gotta do that idea. So it's um, page thirteen of the master plan where the population trends are talked about, seasonal population. I thought that this chart that we might want to insert into that section in the placement of a chart that is there now.
Mm-hmm.
Don't you think?
I, I remember pulling that page and stuffing it into the master plan.
I think it just gives a lot of good information and it's very current compared to what's in there, so. I think it would kind of be a nice addition. With this section, put it in this section. Right there, okay, replace that chart with page two of that.
Does that chart have anything about the seasonal recreational use of housing? No, because that's the only thing that
Well, that's.
This chart has, but that other one doesn't, right?
Right, and that was the next thing that I found from the Housing Now data?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe I did.
I'm not saying we have to incorporate it in that other chart, I'm just saying we want to be sure we still have that data somewhere, probably.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just not, I, this isn't really one of, this is the better version, so. That is really one here, hold on one second, let me look. Well, I'm not finding it, but I know that I had something with seasonal data on it, because I do think that's important as well. So, oh, here it is, seasonal housing. So. Page V I dash two of the Housing Now survey.
Is that in this?
That would be in this one.
Okay.
And I don't even know how to tell you to get to it, maybe you can search it.
I can search it.
Yeah. It's called overall housing supply secondary data.
Hold on, I'm staying. Okay.
Because this thing's so big, yeah.
Yeah, it's huge.
Yeah, sorry. And you put in housing characteristics.
It's crazy that they don't have the page numbers to identify the same as the document, it's very frustrating.
I know, it's just that they're. Yeah, I know. So, sorry, I was pulling stuff out because it's so big, I didn't wanna have to take the whole page.
I don't know, it's not. Oh, where did he say it?
Yeah, I'll try to skip through that one.
It's gonna go like that.
Which, which V I.
So five, check five.
Five dash two is my page that I'm looking at it as far as the bottom.
I would say it's a little less than halfway through the document. Genuinely, though, that's.
Which genuinely, I'm very tired.
It's kind of helpful, maybe.
Yeah.
Because there's two hundred and twenty-three pages, so maybe try like page eighty and see where we're at.
And that was the condensed version, so.
And then go down to the bottom and see where, what number it's on.
I think we're getting closer.
Yeah, hold on, I gotta get small. I guess at home I have a monitor.
Yeah, I'm struggling.
Looks like that's. It's not really. Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah.
You're getting closer.
Yeah.
So those.
So.
Wait, this is four.
They are four right now, so we need to get going. The six.
Eight. Gosh, don't look at the screen like I'm murdering.
Oh, you just passed it.
One, two.
V I, that's two.
Oh, my gosh. Good job, team effort.
Hey, we can find it, okay, okay. So this shows the occupied and vacant housing units by tenure for the twenty twenty two students. And it has percentages on there for Lulunon County.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe we can incorporate just those num- our specific numbers for Lulunon County in
Yeah.
Seasonal population data. I wish I had something that was closer to the township, I just haven't been able to find it yet. Now, maybe in October when we have that meeting, joint meeting with the planning commission and the community foundation gives us the data that maybe we'll want to replace.
Yeah.
Replace something in here, because hopefully we can get something closer to the township. That's what I'm hoping to place in it in the township. I know the village is like a pipe dream, but.
The other thing that I can think for our own data to pull would be how many are non-homesteaded, but that still doesn't really tell you for sure how it's being used.
Exactly.
Right, I mean.
Non-homestead could be still a rental, right?
Right.
Right, correct, so it still might be that there's people there, like, it's just, I just was trying to think if there's any other way, I don't know how else you could pull that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm hoping to get something more specific, but at this point, this is the best season.
Other than asking people, we could ask in the survey too, but since we're not getting a hundred percent return rate, that doesn't.
That's a problem, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at what the township asked, and they.
Oh, yeah, because you did have that township survey.
Yeah, they, um, about um, sixty percent of the respondents classify themselves as year-round residents. Um, but that doesn't tell you if um, they're just seasonal or if they're people who go to Arizona in February.
Plus, I honestly think the people who are gonna fill out the survey are probably more likely to be people who are here
year-round or a majority of the year versus people who are barely here, because they're probably less likely to see that they even have a survey to fill out.
They're gonna throw it in recycling bin.
Right.
Hopefully, yeah.
That's in the transcript.
I'm putting it out there, so anyways, um, okay. So, that was information I found on seasonal population. Like I said, I hope we can get more specific, but at this point, that's the last I found.
Great job.
Moving to page fourteen for the aging population, if you go down a couple pages, Virginia, in the same same survey, um, I B dash eight. Oh, and Housing North.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. It provides, um, again, by the county and the population by age. So I thought that we could enter and incorporate those numbers since they're more recent. But it's the twenty ten census, and now that I'm looking at it, so I don't know how recent it is. Didn't we have another census number of twenty twenty?
Yeah. Uh huh.
So we need to pull that data, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I'm gonna scratch that. I'll make it out. Okay.
And I, I, um, we were talking at one point about the twenty twenty census and um, then can we talk about how that's not even gonna be accurate because of everything that happened after COVID and now, oh.
Yeah. We still have to put something in there. I mean, we don't want to leave it with the data that it is, because that's quite dated. You know, I mean, I think it would be better to update to twenty twenty knowing, I mean, I just, there's only so many ways we can collect the information and we can't do a full data collection on our own, like, we can't do our own census, so.
Come on, you have time.
Yeah, I know, right, yeah.
Too soon.
Yeah, too soon, yeah, I mean, I don't have seventh street yet, so let's just, let's just wait.
Right, yeah, okay. So. Hold on, I have other stuff that I'm just trying to put in here, see if it's over, but now that I realize there's stuff still falling down. I know, because I really stuck, run this stuff up. It does have projections for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven, but like you said, I'm afraid it may be skewed because of our, you know, changes from COVID, so I don't know if this is something we even really want to use. And it does have like heads of household by age, I'm not sure if we want to incorporate that even. And then, of course, the affordable housing, workforce housing section. Which are numbers from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. Most accurate I've been able to find now. Do you think that's accurate enough, or do we want to wait and see that after the five? Anybody?
Well, the, the fellow that's, who's the person that works for the county?
Zach Hillier or?
Yeah, but would he have really?
He's our county, yeah. He, he's our county representative.
Yeah.
Housing board.
But he might be a good resource for.
He might be somebody that we should pull from, okay, so maybe even on contact now.
Yeah, so he has been working with the foundation on gathering the housing data that um, they gave us.
Okay.
But they're um, now that, that they've had the um, package of bills get through Congress and signed in Michigan, um, at their, at, starting to work more on different projects, and there may be updates.
Okay. So I'll reach out to him and see if we can find him. Okay, so then moving on, do we want to start going, start where we left off? I think we still have some time, or do we want to move on to reports now? We're at seven twenty-six. How's everybody feeling?
Why don't we finish the reports and then use up any additional time on this?
Oh, that's what I do. Does that work for anyone?
Sure.
Okay, well, let's do that then. So first up is the zoning administrator, Tony.
Yeah, you have my report. Lots going on and.
So you say.
Well, you don't have it? I have.
I have.
What's in the drop box? I know, I, I already looked at it. I included it with the agenda too. Oh, I read it, yeah, it's in the, in the drop box, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I hope.
Um. My last, my final week since the zoning administrator, everyone wants to talk to me.
Right.
She's getting all the things. There, there has been a lot of phone calls, a lot of meetings, and um, I'm, I'm keeping Mr. Dyer um, you know, informed and included. And so he will be coming on October first, but um, and attending your meetings, so, yeah. You got, I don't know, did anyone have any questions over my report and what's current census?
So we did, I saw as a trustee, I had asked about the hospital, and I did see the email that was forwarded that they did get their grant approved, correct? Their brownfield.
Brownfields.
Yes.
Yeah, which I think is great for everyone to know and.
Do the demo of them?
Right, yes, do the demo.
Yeah, yeah, excellent.
Which is very exciting, yeah, it's incredibly exciting.
Hmm, yeah.
Wow.
So, can I just ask, um, the zoning board of appeals meeting that you had last week, the has there been anything that's happened since then as far as the owners trying to write the violation or?
No.
Okay, so there hasn't any prior, not that someone wrote on that, okay.
No. No additional information.
Yeah, they're given the opportunity to come back for, um, to look at their site plan, amend their site plan, um.
Expand their special use.
Use.
Or, um, child for parents.
Yes.
Yeah.
The, I had to go back and plug it in so that I could have a transcript of it to see, because I was being talked, someone was talking to me during the meeting, so when it was all said and done, I'm like, I don't know what just happened.
And it bothered me honestly.
Yeah. However, I do have the transcript and the recording is on our um, YouTube page. Uh, although I, as I mentioned earlier, um, unfortunately, the first fifteen minutes, uh, is what I'm told, um, was muted.
That, that made me crazy. I thought, what am I doing wrong? Why can't, where's my volume?
It wasn't until we got a member of the public come into the meeting that said, oh, you're muted, and so, yeah.
Yeah, because I watched it later, so I, yeah.
I'll, I'll put the details in, you just missed me reading out prepared state, and it wasn't too much, so.
Well, and I think Kevin and Sean's speaking was muted too, which is really unfortunate, but not intentional.
Yes, it was. No, no.
In no way, obviously.
I can, I can capture that.
Yeah.
Hasn't heard of everybody else?
Yes. Yeah, so stay tuned. They have ninety days to respond, so, yeah.
And the trustee report.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, did not include a summary of the zoning board of appeals, it's simply the um, actions from the um, meeting till on September seventh. And if you have any questions. I have one question. The pavilion, we're, we talked about the pavilion, we're talking about the big pavilion. We can, yeah. What they call the other, the other thing we call the gazebo, okay.
Gazebo.
Yeah.
So the Kent Holton Pavilion. It will be where Rezekin the Park has been.
Right, okay.
I mean, he's been doing it for thirty years.
How many years is it?
Thirty, thirty years.
Eight years.
Thirty, eighty.
Wow.
Rezekin the Park has been happening for thirty-eight years?
Kent Holton, yeah, thirty-eight years.
So it's gonna be a plaque, what is it gonna be?
Yeah.
Well, it will be um, some type of installation um, at the um, choice of the um, Northport Performing Arts Center. Um, they're going to order and um, pay for the, whatever it is they install with final approval coming from the village council. But, yeah, I suspect that it will be some type of um, the Parks and Trails Committee didn't meet, but I did learn that um, we have grants totaling about sixty thousand dollars to go towards um, replacing the old wooden playground equipment. Um, it, the cost estimate was probably around eighty-five, and so we still, um, we might ask about some place of gas.
I got the truck full right now.
But I'm certainly, I think we will ask for, um, you know, public donations.
Yeah.
I think there's.
That, that's the playground equipment by the beach down there.
Yes. Yeah, South Beach, it would allow each, yeah. The um, Chris McCann has been working with um, a supplier that has some beautiful new indestructible almost equipment that won't move splinters.
And that's the village council meeting, but I'm wondering what's going on in the short term with the test, does that happen?
It's, um, people are, are being asked to submit letters of interest to serve on it. It's, people are, are being asked to submit letters of interest to serve on it. And I'm not, we have a lot of people volunteering. But I don't know right now where Chris is in the sorting process. And I don't know if we've had other applicants since the meeting.
I'm not aware.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is happening, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're kind of behind a little bit. Any other questions on the trustee report? Okay, tree committee.
Yeah, there's one thing, it's not a committee, but it's infrastructure, but is relevant to us is that they're taking down currently about 10, 10 of the aged out trees. You'll see them, they're starting on the south end of the village and they're working their way up to the, maybe about, what is that, Sixth Street, maybe? They're master craft. So anyway, they're coming down, they, I'm thinking they'll be finished maybe tomorrow. Jane was very timely in her mention of, because we've, we talked about continuing the, the two barrels and actually adding to that. And she was at the meeting, the tree committee meeting, so, yeah, we decided to go ahead with that and keep going with it. Right now, we're pretty much decided on going with a particular grant that we have money for that will go out and then come back right back to us again with consumers. So I've got some calls and we're looking at that. And right now, we are looking for sites, proposals of sites that can be, they could take a tree, whether it's this year or into the future. We're looking to assemble a good list of sites, so we've always got, you know, maybe 15 or 20 each year we can put in. And the other thing was a new one, which was the, the holiday or Christmas tree, what, what the options are. Put a report together for the council, so with the choices somewhat similar to what we're doing with Seventh Street where we'll come up with the different options and the implications of each option and then submit that to council and then they can make a decision with it. So that's, that's pretty much it, but we plan to begin planting and have planted maybe 15 to 20 trees this next year. It's going to be an ongoing program, so every year we put in maybe 15 or 20 trees into the future. But you can't just put them in and that's it. You've got to keep going with that program. So as they age on, more new ones come in, so they don't all die at one time.
So we did discuss the possibility of having an adopted tree program.
Yes. That would be our new trees that go in, we would ask people to adopt them and keep an eye on them and give a phone call when something doesn't look right or to, you know, help water them, because we'll have those bags, gator bags on them. And they can keep them filled like once a week in longer weather, so they get about 15 gallons a week, which would be good. But I've already talked to Four Seasons Nursery, Brian Zimmerman, and he's already got a list for us of 15 trees that are native and that fit into that $3,000 range, and they'll deliver a whole batch at one time for a hundred bucks. And we'll get a planting mix that will go in with the trees and we, I talked to Chris Holton. There's an area behind the DTW building where we can place all 15 trees at the holding pad in one spot. So we can take them out and plant them and we don't have to do them all at one time like with the region.
So are they going to be throughout the village or in a certain site now?
Right now, it can be throughout the village, depends on what sites we get. That's where it helps, because if we've got sites, we'll put trees in. If we can get sites, if we can get 30 or 40 sites proposed, then we can scatter them. But right now, we're looking at, you know, there's a bunch of them on Mill Street and, you know, places where they're needed. But if there's others, by all means, you know, put them in, we will put those sites down and we encourage the public to, you know, come in and ask, ask for a tree as well. And we'll, we'll basically look at the site and see what size tree it can take.
Okay.
Yeah, where possible, they'll try to replant where the aged out trees are, are coming down. But that's sometimes easier said than done.
Yeah, that's why it's nice to have alternative sites, so that in two or three years when those sites are ready to plant, we're ready to plant them. We don't want this to just be a one-time thing like with relief where we do it and then that's it for, till somebody decides to do it again. We want to do this every year while going into the future.
It's our tree city.
Tree city.
So what's your total up to?
Oh, well, we got about $7,000.
It's amazing.
Plus whatever I got in the truck.
Whatever.
Can you?
That's a short year. That just started mid-June.
Can you elaborate on the Christmas tree?
Essentially, what we got is, we did have a report by Parchells Tree Service. They had volunteered, Matt had volunteered for our last relief planting in this last October. And while he was there, I'd asked him to take a look at the village tree and give us an idea of whether this is helpful. And he said, no, it's, you know, we can, it'd be about three or four applications and that it would run maybe about 800 to 1,000 a year. And we can keep it going. However, it's, you know, it is, the tree is older. And so we're proposing or we're basically suggesting that they may look at a replacement tree. And if we can get that in starting now, by the time that one ages out, we can have another tree, but.
Is this in the same spot?
I don't know, that's sort of.
This is what, what complicated, that's private property.
Right.
Yeah, because Dave said that, I often thought that maybe it was on the right of way, the street right of way. But Dave Tompkins thought, no, it's, it's actually on private property, so. And the villa, that property is currently for sale. Yeah, so we don't know, that could change things preferably, you know.
So, and it was treated this year?
Was it?
It was this year, and there was a voluntary donation.
Oh, great.
So I don't, she kept, and it's been waters.
I haven't been told, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was just confirmed that the tree has been treated.
Great.
Yeah.
Great, so, yeah, Parchells report, I forwarded a copy of it to you, Jane, and then, yeah, because they basically said there was two problems with it. And I don't have with me now, but there's a spruce blight and there's a, an aphid type of thing that, you know, a screw caught with an insect. And, you know, these things can be treated for and, you know, prolong the life of the tree for quite a while. And we can raise that money with the tree committee.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Bob? Okay, do we want to circle back to, well, circle back to zoning for a little bit? We're at 7:41.
Master plan.
Master plan, I'm sorry. Okay, don't even mind. Okay. So I'm showing, we ended at page 21, so starting on 22? Oh, no, I'm wrong. I see more pink bubbles. Maybe it's bigger than I thought it was. Let's try 46 instead.
What page do you think we got to?
46?
You don't think we did it? I mean, unless I didn't say on the notes, which is highly unlikely, but.
We have pink bubbles on page 40. We have pink bubbles on 45, so that's why I thought.
Someone else could have been from the original.
Oh, original bubbles?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe I was right in saying 21.
Because I had gone through it when I converted it and put bubbles in.
So let's go back to 22.
Sorry.
That's okay. I just love my pink bubbles.
But yeah, we definitely made changes on page 21. Yeah, so I'm showing we're in this section. Is there anybody else saying we're in this section or do we think we're something?
Yeah, I mean, mine I have for the seasonal housing and the schools and public safety, all those, obviously, we just need to update and be sure the data is accurate because there's lots of those throughout. I mean, that kind of goes without saying, right? I mean, we know we need to go through it.
Update data.
Update.
Yeah.
Also, under transit, I wanted to be sure that the, when you look at the second paragraph, I want to be sure all the stuff that it's talking about and like the pilot program, that those are all still actually available.
Beta has changed their services, but it's still available, but yeah, that does need to be.
Well, like, is the program Leland All Wellness still?
I don't even know if that's still.
That's what I'm saying, like, I wasn't sure if that still exists or if it's called that anymore or.
Or they, I think they combined with, they didn't combine with shared care, but I think the coordinating with shared care is up.
Yeah, I mean, we have to look into that.
Yeah.
How about tracking? I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have no idea where you guys are talking about. Is my marking off the basis?
So if you go, so the, yeah, I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So if you go to the transit section.
Okay.
And then you look in the second paragraph. It's talking about beta services, which is a little different than what it is now.
Okay.
So we would need to adjust because now it's not a fixed route, it's like Uber. And then the, the stop is still in the same, anyway. And then the Leland County Senior Services that it's talking on a little later in that paragraph, it just disappeared. Computers, they're talking about a program called Leland All Wellness, which I'm not sure if that's still what it's called or if it's still even available or whatever, so we might need to remove it.
I think since it's all kind of on demand, it's just folded into there.
Well, that's what I don't know if, see, because like what they're talking about is that senior services offers those rides directly. And I don't know, and plus, they just changed who's in charge of their department also. So like, I don't know if that's the same and I just don't want to leave it in there if it's not.
That's all I wanted to do. Why is it doing that? That's so weird. Okay.
Technology, yeah, it's telling you, it's tired.
It's tired.
I, that's so weird. I just wanted to come out. Sorry, guys.
That's okay, we can, I mean, 7:46, so if we want to.
Why, isn't that strange? It's not like.
Wait, well, you put a time in it?
Oh, that's the smart. Okay, there comes a time, so guys.
Well, I think the airport has organized change too.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of, like, updating data. Because like, literally every single one of those sections has data that we would want to update.
It, it's not the counties anymore.
Your report is the township.
It's the township, yeah.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about cherry, it's talking about cherry.
Oh, is it?
It's totally changed. It's an airport authority.
Yeah.
So the county doesn't do anything with it anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's so, I mean, I really think we want to just have, if you just read through and highlight those and just change them out to whatever the new data is or delete them.
Is consumer still really the only one for the village or is it cherry land too? Because they overlap so much.
Consumers.
For the whole village.
You have consumers, right?
Yeah, I do, on the south edge, yeah.
Okay, yeah. We can just do something like that. Back to the bus. I don't really know how it works. I've never taken a video. It was gone.
Yeah, there's an app where you can request it now or you can call them.
And I think in the second to the last sentence, where Kathy had referenced where it talks about Leland County Senior Services, we have to look into whether that's still.
And, yeah, and if it is still that, it's not a pilot program anymore.
Yeah.
So.
Who sends out that newsletter? Is there a newsletter, senior?
Yeah, it just came out, right, yeah.
Yeah, who sends that out?
Senior Services, yeah.
Yeah, for the county.
See that photo of George on the cover?
My photo, yeah.
We would not be receiving that.
No, that's why I would contact senior services if I may know.
For me, the next two pages are the maps, which there is, I mean, I assume we're going to update the maps and fix them because there's some spelling mistakes. And then one of the things on the map, that's all the recreational things, we've just identified all of the ones that are ours, which I get. But the township lists the Marina and Hazrat in theirs also. And so I just wondered, since the dog park is within, if we should list it, but like identify that it's township or something, just because it's.
Within the village.
Within the village.
Yeah, I think stuff that's within the village, we don't need to highlight Raymond Hill, but.
The dog park's kind of new, right? A lot wouldn't have been in there.
Right.
Yeah. I think we should put it in there.
Even though it's, we don't know.
I also wondered, since it's a recreational ass, yeah, but there, but we have stuff on here already that is township, like the ownership is identified. So we just can color it that.
Yeah.
The other one that I wondered if we should add, because it's supposed to be recreational assets in the village, if we should consider adding the Highlands Pool, because they do already have Northport Public Schools and the Leland Conservancy as ownership. So it's not like it's all, and that is a community asset and it is recreation. And I think that it might be something to consider, yeah. The only thing I wasn't sure is, because obviously they charge money for you to use it, but like, I also think that the intent and the reason it was built was so that the community can use it, so. Sorry, I have one more thing too. On that same map, it says Northport Municipal Beating Beach. Don't we call it South Beach?
Yeah.
So I like. Okay, yeah. Sorry, I'm trying to read my notes. And we should, the, the pavilion could be on there too, right? I don't think it's on there. We can put in the Kent Holton Pavilion, right? Especially because that's something we allow people to rent, so I mean, I think putting that on there would make sense. Are there other things that people can rent that aren't on this map that we could add?
Gazebo.
Gazebo, so we should add that too, probably.
A lot of people reserve out by the anchor. Really, it's just a spot, you know. Yeah, let's add that too.
Photos, like wedding photos?
Weddings, parties and.
Well, and Hazrat is on, the one at Hazrat, is that what you're talking about? So I wonder if we could put it just like as an identifier with Hazrat, like with that definition, because it's the same spot on the map. Otherwise, it's going to be two dots right on top of each other. But that way, just because then if you're like, where am I going to rent? But that way, just because then if you're like, where am I gonna rent, I mean, then there is a map somewhere at least that you could identify to people or that even could be used on the website as like when you're filling out rentals, where is, where are these locations? Yeah, yeah.
Actually, you could even rent the golf course clubhouse, I mean, you can use it, I don't think you'll.
That's true.
So that should cut the down mark.
Yeah, and the golf course is on the map, but you're right, it doesn't say, so we could, yeah, include the clubhouse or something.
Okay, we've got six minutes. Until eight o'clock, so do we want to extend or do we want to?
Well, we need public comment.
Do public comment and board member comment?
I, I think.
We're good at stopping here.
Probably end here and actually.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, you can.
About the maps, North Shore is two words, correct? And it's spelled as one and it bugs me on that map, so just, I just wanna point out in case people.
And correction, South Shore says Smith Avenue.
Does it? It does, wonderful, yeah, so.
And I don't know why we don't, because I just found out what the name of the street is, we don't have Main Street on there and, which I just learned the name of that street.
Yeah.
And Bay Street.
Yeah, because they have it as Rose, but it doesn't say Rose, like it's, yeah, anyway, and that's, yeah.
Yeah, Rose is one of the same.
But it's Bay over here, it's Rose over here, and then this is Main Street going through Lockwood.
We're trying to make it as confusing as possible.
But with all the turns and name changes and everything else, yeah.
Maybe we'll sell maps.
Yeah.
Lost curse.
Some stars.
That's a great idea.
Well, if the kids go out and they get surrounding primary, they turn the signs and have a booth with themselves, they get people back from the village.
Yeah.
My idea.
No, that's, it's not, it isn't important, but yeah, there were a number of things that were disfigured.
Okay, so we'll start there next, next time.
This version two.
On page, we have to remember it. Um, how about nearby recreation facility on page twenty-five?
Oh, that's so smart.
What, I won't remember. So, moving on to public comments, do we have anybody out there in Zoom that would like to make a comment? Looks like Anne would. Go ahead, Anne. Oh, you're so, you're muted again.
Um, just have one technical comment. Virginia has been sharing her screen during a lot of the meeting while she's typing. And for me, I believe, and I don't know for other people, it means that we only can get a really teeny tiny view of the, of the people speaking. And we're watching her move her cursor back and forth as she's correcting, so I just, I'm not sure that's the best thing. It's really helpful for documents that you're discussing, but when she's typing, we're, we're seeing her screen, you know what I mean? So you might wanna think about not screen sharing while she's typing minutes, is what I'm getting at. But more substantively, I just wanted to say, as someone who's worked a lot in the field of strategic planning and survey research, I'd like to second, I think it was Virginia's comment about trying to get questions that you will be able to get some solid answers to and not all just open-ended questions, because it makes it hard to get the data in a format that is very usable. And along with that, I'd just like to say that the master plan is not supposed to be about any specific issue, as I understand it. And so I would raise a little bit of caution about, including in your survey information about something like the mill pond or a specific park or whatever, because you could skew your results and that's also not really the way decisions about the mill pond, for instance, just to take one, are supposed to be made. They, they're gonna be made on the basis of financial data and scientific data, engineering data, not just on public opinion. And I just would caution against skewing your master plan data and who might respond to your survey by, by including some sort of hot-button current political issues that can really mess up survey research. Good luck, I hope that the master plan gets aligned with the Leland Township plan, I know you guys were talking about that throughout the meeting. I think it's really important that the two documents be coordinated, because we really are one community and some of the decisions that have to be made in the future are about some big picture issues about economic, housing and environmental data. And lastly, what we found looking at the Leland Township master plan was that these documents tend to be sort of, have gotten into a little bit of a format over time and people tend to copy their, their previous year's format, you know, their previous five-year format. And one of the things that we learned in the Leland Township situation is that the format had very limited scope for discussing environmental issues. And for many of us, environment and energy issues, which are really coming to the fore in our, in our world, in our locality and so on, are, are really critical. And so I would suggest on, on the master plan that you be sure that the sentiments of, of the community in terms of what they see in the future and what they want in terms of environment and energy issues get addressed in the master plan. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Anne. Anyone else? It doesn't look like it, so I'm moving on to board member comment.
So, I'd like to thank Anne for making some very relevant points and I know she has the professional experience to back up her recommendations, so I appreciate her, her comments very much.
Yeah, and I think that once we have a draft, I mean, I think it'll be really helpful, there are members of the public that have asked me about the survey and looking at the questions, I had a time to give input also, and I think the same thing, I of course was thinking of Anne also, that it will be nice to hopefully be able to get some feedback on when we have a draft for people to look at before it goes out.
Okay, anyone else?
I do, I was reading, I think it was a news feed about some zoning things going on in Traverse City recently. And what they said is that in Traverse City, for the height of residential buildings, I think it says thirty-five foot, like we didn't have that. But what they said they're considering down in Traverse City is saying, is changing it to say that if you have a sloped roof, the height is thirty-five feet, but that if you're building a more contemporary type of building, like we have behind the Pentagon Collection, it'll be twenty-five feet, because they said when these moderns, boxy type structures go up, particularly when we're, as we're talking about moving closer to our lot lines, it can, the mass visually is really large to the homes next door. So it's something that caused me to think, hmm, that's kind of an interesting concept. So they say, and that would restrict these kind of homes to two stories, if they have a flat roof. But if you have a slope, it could go up to thirty-five. So I thought that was something we had to think about, I thought it was kind of.
Well, we could also do it in zones too, like that way it would still potentially be thirty-five in the core, no matter what, but you could consider in like R two, R three, R four.
Right.
You know, because those are like purely, you know, residential districts.
Right, right.
It's a little different.
When I look at this, at this building, if this was three stories, which it could be if it was thirty-five feet, I just think that might be really oppressive to the house next door, they have this huge block right next door, so I thought that was something I wanted to share.
Thank you. Wait, any others? Any other comments? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Kathy seconds, and so we adjourn at eight oh three. Sorry, I was trying to get it in, I was like, okay, do we extend? Okay.
No. I hope I'm telling that I was really surprised.
I will, I will, I will.